Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tiny Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you all here today. As always, we have important items on our agenda and we're going to start right off and get to those, but first, we like to start off on the right foot. And we have Reverend Valerie Thompson here with Revelation Missionary Baptist Church to provide our invocation consistent with her faith tradition, but I need to also point out that she is the pastor and the faith counselor to our Mayor Pro Tem. So, and many, many others here in Columbus. So, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for your love and your kindness. And Father God, we know that you are God of justice and of mercy, and we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity you have given us to serve you. Help us, the Heavenly Father, to be, help us with our character. Help us, God, with our direction so that we may serve this community as you have instructed us to serve. Father God, guide these your people to be leaders that are pleasing in your sight. Father God, we thank you now for all you have done and all you will do. Father God, with all the crime and hate in this community, we pray now that you will bind us together in Christian love. Father God, help us stand together. Father God, in unity and solidarity. Father God, bless this city that we call Columbus. Father God, allow us, us to be all that you have called us to be. In the mighty name of Jesus, let all of God's children say, amen.
Amen. Thank you so very much, Reverend Thompson. And now, we have a real treat. We've got Blanchard Elementary School here. This is their broadcast team. So, maybe they can give us some pointers when they're done with the pledge of allegiance. But they're going to come forward and lead us in the pledge, so you all come on up to the clerk's desk here. And as they assemble, if everyone would please stand and prepare for them to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
All right. Great job. Yep, don't go anywhere. We want you to introduce yourselves. And Dawn, the principal, come on, you all come on up too. We've got a teacher and the principal. Everybody. Okay, yes ma'am. Tell us your name and what grade you're in.
I am Morgan McNeil and I am 9th and I'm in 4th grade.
Okay.
I'm Wesley Phillips. I'm 10th and I'm 5th grade.
I'm Grace Sherbushaw. I'm 11th and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Kimari Gray. I'm 9th and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Travis Monroe. I'm in 5th, I'm 10th and I'm in 5th grade.
All right.
And good morning. I'm Dawn Grantham, Principal at Blanchard Elementary School, and we thank you for this opportunity. It's a real pleasure.
You bet. And yes ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Christine Mitchell. I'm the Library Media Specialist at Blanchard Elementary.
Yeah, and so you help direct the broadcast team, I guess?
I do. They have come in every morning, extra early. They start at 7:30 in the morning and they put a whole show together that airs at 8:00 a.m. and is completed by 10:00 a.m., a lot in a little bit of time.
Wow, that's great. Well, I'll tell you, I'm sure you've got 10 willing participants, 11 willing participants, if you ever need to interview an elected official.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all. Let's give them a round of applause. You all have a great day. All right, we've got several items on the mayor's agenda today, and first, we want to call forward the Columbus Convention and Trade Center with an update. We have an introduction. Larry Campbell, the interim director, and of course, the new director Haley Henderson is here with her board. If you all would like to come up. And Robert Nobles, the Chair of that authority. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, counselors, distinguished guests and other city employees here. We're glad to bring you another update. Standing to my left here is Ms. Haley Henderson, who's now our new Executive Director for the Columbus Convention and Trade Center. I'm also joined by our former Executive Director Larry Campbell and a couple of board members here, two of our, total of five, Mr. Shawn Knox and Ms. Helena Coats. We're glad to have this opportunity and just to kind of bring you up to speed on what happened since the last time we met. The last time we met, we, this was right after Mr. David Beavens had resigned and moved away to North Carolina. We appointed as the interim at that time, Mr. Larry Campbell, who had worked for over 20 years at the Trade Center. And during that process, we conducted a search, nationwide search. We put the advertised to the city. We hired Shayna Young through the Columbus Leadership, Columbus State Leadership Academy there, and she kind of directed the process. But we collected resumes, over about 60 resumes or so, and we worked through them and we were able to narrow them down to about 10. And we continued to work on that process using Skype interviews. We also did background checks, looked at their background work through industry, through our vendors that we worked with, which is now ovations or spectra, as they're now called. And we were able to narrow it down to about two or three individuals. And among those two, we decided to have them in for a full day of interviews. They met with board members, they met with key staff members of the Trade Center, and they met with others here in the community. And eventually, we were able to make a decision. And all this time, while we were looking and looking and looking, right under our nose was Ms. Haley Henderson. She was just working away, believing that it was going to be hers, and we're so fortunate to have her here in this community, a person who has a passion for the Trade Center, a person who's willing to be here in the Columbus community and has a skill set to run the Columbus Convention and Trade Center.
Great. Well, Haley, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you so much. As Mr. Nobles said, my passion is for this town. I absolutely love Columbus. My family history is here. My life has become what it is today because of this people here in Columbus, Georgia. So, to be able to represent the Trade Center and to bring more awareness all across the state and nation to what Columbus has to offer is truly an opportunity. And at a more appropriate time, I would love to come back to let you know what our plans are, what the future's going to be for the Trade Center, and I can assure you, it's going to be a lot of great and remarkable things. So, thank you so much, and I, again, I love the Trade Center and I love this city.
Well, thank you. Again, congratulations, and Larry, thank you for your willingness to step up and serve in the interim capacity while the search was being done. And of course, to our authority members, you all put in a lot of work for no pay, which sometimes goes unrecognized by the citizens out there, so thank you for what you do. Next, we have a request by Elizabeth Barfield, our forensic auditor, and of course, John Redman, our internal auditor is here with her. Good morning, John. Elizabeth would like to speak to us about an animal control audit request.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. I'd like to come in to you and get authorization to do an audit of the financial transactions of the Animal Control Department. Due to the recent retirement of Harvey Milner, there have been some changes within the public works area as far as shifting in management, and they have a new person over animal control. What we'd like to do is review past financial transactions and take a look at the processes and internal controls moving forward to ensure the success there in that area.
You had a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, and I believe the second was Counselor Allen. Tiny, any questions for Elizabeth this morning? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate what you all do. And John, I'm sorry you all were left off the agenda, but you're here, and of course, we know you have a standing appointment with us. We have John Williams here and also Representative of the Tax Commissioner's Office. Good morning. So, good to see you. And they're here to update us on where we are with the tax assessor and tax collection process.
I too was a little confused about whether or not I was supposed to be here this morning, but I'm here.
Well, you're always welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. City Manager, ladies and gentlemen of council. Just here to give you another update on the appeals as they are as of this morning at 8:00 a.m. So, standard cover sheet. Got 9,273 active appeals in the system right now. That's 13.3% of the taxable properties. Our value in dispute is down to 2.99%. I think that was a high of maybe 3 and 1/4, 3.4, so that's on its way down, as is the total number of appeals that you see. We've got 6,857 or approximately 74% of those have been reviewed, so 3/4 have been reviewed. 2416 represents the active appeals remaining to be reviewed, or approximately 25, 26% of those reviewed. 4,202 or 61% have been recommended for a reduction. 4,456 have been mailed a, what we call a 30-day notice of assessment. That's their, when they get an indication or a letter from us saying it's been reduced, that's the letter they get. And 1,050 of those have expired or have been terminated, but expired by reaching the 30-day The 1,846 or roughly 27% of those have been recommended for no change. Less than 1/2 of 1% has been ear-tagged for a administrative manager review, and almost 11% or actually just slightly over 11% have been designated for a division manager review, which is either one of my managers or my level. So, that represents the brief update from our office this morning. I'll be glad to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, while council is warming up for any questions, sir, would you like to say anything from the Tax Commissioner's Office? Any update of what's going on? How's it, getting any envelopes in the mail?
Absolutely. We were greeted from this past three-day weekend with a lot of bills, so the bills are out, the collections are coming in, and we are collecting. My name is David Britt. I am a Deputy Tax Commissioner with the Tax Commissioner's Office. And again, at the last meeting, we updated that the bills were out. A lot of you got your tax bills, and thank you for sending those in. But we've, we've got collections going, and we have gotten a lot of questions from the community. And we've interviewed John and the Tax Commissioner on CCGTV, and we're working to answer all those questions, and of course, we're still getting more. So, what we're going to do at the Tax Commissioner's Office is have a Q and A, like an informational session tomorrow, Wednesday, October 11th, right in the lobby, and we're encouraging the public to come out. We're going to have the three Deputy Tax Commissioners and the Tax Commissioner on hand to answer any questions. We're asking that any citizens that come out have their questions written down, along with an email address or a phone number. That way, if your question requires further research, we can research it and we'll contact you back shortly. And we'll also be taking property tax payments, so if you, just on Wednesday, October 11th, if you can't make it by 4:30 when we close, you can come between at 5:30 and 6:30, get your questions answered, and leave your property tax bill with us.
Oh, great. Okay. Wonderful. Counselor Woodson?
Question, is this going to be televised for those individuals that won't be able to make it because it's like a last month, a last-minute announcement today in council?
Right, right. Yes, we'll certainly record it. We'll work with CCGTV to get it on, and judging by the participation and response we get, we'll definitely schedule for some more sessions.
Would some of the Q and A questions be, well, maybe I should ask the City Manager. Some of the Q and A questions that are being answered are asked and answered. Could they be on our website, a link or something where people can, or on the Tax Commissioner's website? Because some people might watch the TVs and some people might not, but if it's easily accessible on the website and either the cities or the Tax Commissioner's Office will be appropriate for those who like to serve the net.
Sure. Yeah, we'll do whatever we can to get it out to the public.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
The answer to the question is yes, and I'll certainly have CCGTV attend and record it, and we are happy to run it on CCGTV, and certainly IT will take care of putting it on the website.
Thank you very much. I just think, you know, some people will watch it TV-wise and others that are working or whatever would probably search at night or whatever and look at it, so just to be, get it accessible to everyone. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you.
We have Counselor Thomas.
David, would you go over one more time? The question that I have had quite often in the last week or so has been, excuse me, the 85% are the lower of last year's taxes. If my assessment is under appeal, what does that mean to my tax bill that I got from the Tax Commissioner's Office?
Absolutely. All tax bills are due by December 1st. If you, if you have a property that is under appeal, you have the option to pay the 85% or the 2016's last amount due. It is automatically calculated on the bill. What you see on the bill is what is due at this time. If you are under appeal, once that appeal is resolved, you'll either get another bill or you'll get a refund, but that, that amount that is on the bill is what is due.
And as I understand it, the Tax Commissioner's Office has looked at the 85% and at the lower of last year's, and this bill reflects the lower of those two amounts.
The lower of the two, correct. Correct, the lower of the two.
Okay, thank you. I had some folks who thought they could take 85% of that bill, so thank you.
All right, great. It looks like that's all the questions for now, so David, John, thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work. We also have minutes from our September 26th council meeting, ready for approval. Is there a motion to accept them? In a second. Were there any changes or adjustments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please state aye. All right, and we'll move on then to the City Attorney's Agenda. Mr. Fay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. First item up, we have a fairly sizable rezoning petition from the Planning Department. Has to do with the Waverly Terrace Historic District. There may be some folks here, but these properties are going to single-family residential four from various commercial and other multifamily. Mr. Jones, come on over if you want to leave this off briefly. Tell council what we're doing.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of council. This is a, an issue in terms of what we're trying to deal with converting property. It was rezoned for whatever reason in the past. Actually, it actually marries up now with the actual land use itself out there. As you can see from the map on the screen here this morning, we're showing you those areas up there now that most of it's RMF1. The whole idea is really to encourage folks and to come back and maintain that area more than anything else, and all we can do that is provide them some assurance that the home that they're going to be in can either be expanded or can be remodeled or just maintained for the most part. Especially if you, this has always comes to be a problem about the fact, when folks come in for, are asking for a bank loan and they cannot get one because the zoning doesn't marry up with what their actual use is, we're trying to cure that problem here from that standpoint itself. So, you can see involved with all that. Will, do you have the map that shows the, the actual, the actual ones we're trying to change over? We made this offer to the Waverly Terrace area in terms of allowing them to come in and rezone the property. We, we fronted this, this application for them for that very purpose. We had hoped we would get a few more than what we actually got, but we'll take what we have right now to make this work. So, the idea again is to really bring the zoning, the actual land use itself, rather, in compliance with the zoning that's already established for the area itself, so. And you can see up there, these are the areas we've looked at. The ones in yellow are the ones that we, we contacted and tried to work through on that.
Another question?
We've got, I'm sorry, Counselor, hold on a second. Counselor Thomas.
So, Mr. Jones, are you saying the ones in yellow are the only ones that are to be rezoned at this point?
Yes, ma'am. Those are the ones we've made the offer to. Those are the ones we heard back from the property owners saying that they were willing to go through this rezoning process, and that's what we've gone forward with each Again, we wish we had more, more to take us up on that offer, but we'll certainly take what we can get at this point, trying to, trying to preserve this area a little bit better in terms of functionality or anything else.
And from the, the other map that you had up there, are all of the rest of those then RM1?
They're all RMF1, yes, ma'am. We've worked through the association up there as well to accommodate this and getting the word out and so forth. And again, this is what we got back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have Counselor, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem.
I know you say we work with the association, but we have someone to really go sit down and talk to those people.
I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't quite catch the question.
We have somebody to go sit down and talk with the individuals.
Yes, ma'am.
Because like, I remember we did Carver Heights, and we had people, individuals actually go to the houses and talk with them, because a lot of people don't understand what we're talking about.
We worked though, again, with, with the Waverly Terrace Association out there to get, to help us get this word out. We made sure we were thorough in terms of approaching these folks about it. I want to tell you, we went to their homes and sat down and talked to them about it, but we did make them aware of what we were trying to achieve out here, how we could help them preserve their neighborhood and maintain their neighborhood more than anything else. That was our objective. Again, I wish we had more, but unfortunately, these are the ones that were really, were interested in taking up us on the offer.
Any objection?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. If anybody else wants to be heard and other folks here, but we've got the petition and then, yeah, I want to have a speaker come up. Come on up and give your name and address, ma'am, so they can record it.
My name is Libby Smith. I'm President of the Waverly Terrace Historic Neighborhood Association. We have, we were first contacted by the Planning Department a couple of years ago, and we're told that this would only take probably about six months. In the process, three letters would be sent out to the homeowner, property owners within the district. This map that was just up before us does not include my home. It does not include several of the homes of the people that are representing the district. No one has come to our individual homes to talk to us and explain this. We have presented additional signatures from homeowners to the Planning Department three times that would have shown additional approval for this map, and it still does not show So, there is much more support than is shown on this map.
All right, thank you, ma'am, very much. Anything else? Clifton on this? Counselor Henderson?
Just a quick question. I'd love to hear why they weren't included, if the residents feel like there are more properties that want to be brought sort of into compliance and they're, they're no longer a non-conforming use. I'd love to know why they weren't.
Counselor Henderson, my, our objective is to make sure first off and foremost that the property owners themselves are actually the ones that are involved with the rezoning. That was my directive back to staff, was you make sure that we have it signed off from the property owners themselves before we go forward. The Planning Department nor does city has ever gone out and rezoned property where it didn't have the involvement of the property owner directly.
No, I get that. I would never want us to.
And they're willing to, and they're willing.
But I think we've got some folks that at least believe that they provided notification, that they were willing. I'm just curious if there were ever any follow-up or why the ones that's presented, presented the information stating that they would like to be involved, I'm just curious why we weren't able to involve them in this wave.
I can only, I can only attest to the fact that we have, who we have met with Ms. Smith and the others from, from the association. And again, I directed staff back to go back and make sure they had everybody covered that wanted to participate in this rezoning before we came forward to. We were not just going to come up here with a blanket rezoning for the area. We need to know that the property owners were actually on board with this, this request as well.
Something's not connecting in my little pea brain, because it sounds to me, and I agree with everything you said, there's no way we can go in there and, you know, it reminds me of Bellwood. There's no, no way we can go back in there and just rezon, do a blanket rezoning without the, the participation and the approval, explicit approval of the homeowners. But it sounds like, maybe I misheard. I thought, I thought Ms. Smith said that they had provided signatures that while that may not be sufficient, it certainly would open the conversation to see if these folks were willing to.
Well, and again, I, I believe we, we came forward with the ones we'd, we'd heard from. We were glad to go back and double-check and triple-check that again.
And really, I guess there's no reason why we can't do this in stages anyway, as more people come on board.
That's true too, but I, I don't, I don't, for one thing, I don't want to bring information that's not correct to you, for one thing.
I appreciate that.
And the second thing is, I don't, I don't want to make this an actual order. I want to make sure we do it right from the very beginning in terms of how we, how we achieve this. So, we can go back, we can put, if you would like, we can table this, this request and go back and look at it again.
That may, I don't think it would do any harm to just hold off until we're able to circle back with the, because they've got a very active community organization out there, and I think that there may be an opportunity, you know, sometimes this happens. We have a great idea, we bring it up, and then we start hearing other folks that think they, that come forward and say they want to be a part of it. So, I think, I think you're right. I think to get it right from the beginning would, would be, would be a great plan, so maybe we just table it. I know there's another gentleman with some comments too. Thank you.
One more that wants to speak. Come on up.
Okay, and as he comes forward, Mr. Summender, did you add something?
Madam, I was just, and Counselor Henderson has already suggested that we delay or postpone, and certainly I would recommend that we do exactly that and, and maybe even suggest a continuation of first reading, that when they bring it back, others are included, if that be the case, and, and then move forward, because I don't think there's any urgency to move it forward today, so I would certainly suggest that.
All right, thank you. Good morning, sir. If you would just state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Michael Johnson. I'm Secretary of the Waverly Terrace Historic Neighborhood Association. I wanted to show the, the letter, if you could go to the top, please, and show that this is the last letter that the residents received, the, from, from the Planning Department. There is no call to action in this letter that you need to respond, you need to tell us what you think, you need to approve or disapprove. The only call to action is you, at the very bottom paragraph, you may contact Kevin Herd in the Planning Department at the phone number for further information. I called that number and talked to the department, and I was told explicitly, there was nothing else that I needed to do. There was no other action on my part to approve or disapprove. This was almost like an FYI email-type notification. So, I don't understand how the department thinks that it has received approval or disapproval from any resident in the neighborhood. There's no formal approval process or response asked for in any of the letters. This letter is exactly the same as the first letter we received in 2015, and this is the final notice. So, I would ask if we go forward and we need to confirm those folks that want approval or would like their homes, I would ask a more intentional verbiage that you need to respond to this letter within a certain date, your approval or disapproval. There, it's like a, there's no action asked for by the homeowner in this letter. That's all I'm asking, is that we make the further communication, if we need to do that, more intentional for the expectation of the homeowner in response. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see here, we've got, we've got Counselor Henderson.
Just very quickly, I, you know, I commend the Planning Department because this is an initiative undertaken to try to protect neighborhoods. And I think it's, 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 it's something that we, we want to maximize the, the impact of, so I would just make a motion that we delay it until, and continue on first reading, and then, and then allow them an opportunity to circle back with the
back with the, with the representatives of the Waverly Terrace Association that are here today.
Councillor, let's just call it a table, because they're going to need to re-advertise if we add properties.
Okay.
Table it and bring it back.
I amend my motion then, to table it.
Second? All those, Mayor Protim, would you like to speak before or after? Okay, all those in favor of tabling this particular motion, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, and now we have the Mayor Protim.
So, Mr. Jones, when we send, when we send out another letter, can we make sure it's specifically asked if they want to be part of the redesignation?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's at no cost to them, right?
Right, no cost to them.
But if they decide that they want to do it later, after everything has gone through, then they would have to pay to have it rezoned?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Make sure we state those specifics in the letter that goes out to them.
We will, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. And also, ma'am, in the back on the aisle there that I spoke with, walking on the way in, you right there, yes, ma'am, Eric, if you would go see this, ma'am, you with the black shirt, the black blouse and the white flowers, right there, yes, ma'am, Eric's going to come see you so you can talk about the lights that you had, streetlights, and you just tell him what you have. Okay, thank you so much. All right, let's see now, our next item is still with Mr. Fay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Number two on our agenda is the resolution authorizing issuance of a tax anticipation note not to exceed 9.2 million dollars. Finance Director is here, and folks from Davenport and Company. Ms. Alexander, you can go ahead.
Good morning. So as you may remember, last, at the last council session, we sort of asked for counsel's blessing to proceed with an RFB for a tax anticipation note not to exceed 9.2 million dollars. We've received the bids back, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Courtney Rogers from Davenport and Company to sort of discuss those results.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. Mayor, members of council, good to see you again, just by way of quick reintroduction. My name's Courtney Rogers, I'm with Davenport and Company, I'm the senior vice president. I've been for you a couple of times, you might remember my partner, Robert Morrison, who was with you a number of years, I think over 20 years if my memory serves, he retired back in February, so after 55-plus years in the business, he finally decided to head to retirement. So we're here today, my partner Doug Gettpart is with me today, and you all met a couple of weeks ago, my other partner who helps cover Georgia, Ricardo Cornejo. And just, just further by way of background, we are, this year-to-date, we're actually the most active financial advisor in the state, we've done transactions for the city of Decatur, city of Augusta, city of Milton, and city of East Point this year, and actually mailed a second transaction for the utilities in Augusta, doing a $95 million refinancing next week for them, so we spend a lot of time and been very active around the state. Just to give you a little bit of a background, this chart's not meant to indicate the rates that we were intending to get, but just to show you that the short-term rates have increased over the last several months and over the last couple of years, mainly by virtue of the Federal Reserve Open Market Committee, as they've increased rates, you can see the various points there where they've increased the rates. We were asked to send out this RFB, it went out after you all gave us the go-ahead, sent it out on the 22nd of September. We have a very big database of banks, we asked for two different options, the first one was to draw all the money down at one time, which basically would be held in your accounts and could be invested if not needed, but basically would be there until the final maturity date at the end of December, the last business day in December. The other option, which was one we were hoping we were going to get bids for, was basically you have to have an initial draw amount, in this case 50,000, to kind of set the loan, if you would, it's more of a legal issue, and then you can draw any amounts needed up to that 9.2 million if you need it. So in this case, you actually don't pay any interest except for the initial draw until you actually need the money, and so we were hoping we would get that option, but we wanted to put the other option out there in case we weren't, we didn't get any option twos. The good news is, we got a bid for both options. Now, I mentioned we have a very big list of banks, we only got one bid from your hometown bank here in Sanovis. The issue that we ran into, and this was something we were concerned about, is really length of time. This is a large amount of money for banks to go and put, you know, basically set aside on their balance sheet for you to draw when necessary, and a very short amount of time for them to actually earn interest and get their return back. So as a result, we had a handful, probably half dozen different banks that called us, we had two others that we were talking to that were very, very, very interested, and at the last minute, they ended up pulling out, and the reasons they gave was not enough time to really earn any money for them to go through all the effort they have to go through, and all the new banking regulations is really a big part of it. We did get about six banks that said, hey, look, if you don't get any bids, call us back and we'll put something together for you. But it does take effort for them to put a bid together, because they all have to go through credit committees within their each individual banks, and that was the primary reason. So I don't want you to think that it was a credit issue, it's not, it's really amount of time, and that was one of the things we had talked about on some of our conference calls, that the longer we wait, the fewer bids we're probably going to get. For those of you who may not know, we actually assisted the school district in going through their RFB process, and we had.
Three or four?
Four, we ended up with four bids there, and so, we've already closed their line, you know, basically, two weeks ago, I think is when we closed that line, so we were a little further along there, had a little bit more time, and they ended up drawing the entire amount, so the banks were able to earn some interest on that one. So, obviously our recommendation is to move forward with Sanovis, but looking at the two different options, our recommendation is move forward option two. Essentially, it gives you the maximum flexibility, you don't have to pay any interest until you actually need it, but it gives you, if nothing else, an insurance policy, so that money's there if, in fact, the tax collections don't come in as timely as we hope. It is prepayable without penalty before maturity. So, let's say we end up having to pull some money down for just say several days, then you only have to pay interest on those days, once the tax collections do come in, then you can repay it and reduce the amount you'd have to pay in total interest. Interest rate is fixed, it's not going to float, so it's set for basically the balance of the loan. And the one other thing I'll mention is, their fees were very minimal, I didn't mention on the previous page, but it was $1,500 was their fees. One of the things that they told us they learned by going through the bid with the school district, on their, they did not win that one of the four, and they were the highest of the fees, and so they learned through that, so if anything, you got a little bit of benefit with the school district bid that we did for them, in that their fees there were $25,000 upfront, here it was only $1,500. So as far as the bank fees, we got some benefit of that. So our key assumptions as we look at what our estimated per-day costs might be if you do draw some, 9.2 million is our not-to-exceed size, the initial draw, of course, I mentioned, is going to be 50,000, that does include taking care of your cost of issuance, which is $16,100. The closing date, we're looking at October 20, the maturity date will be the last business date of December 29. Interest rate on option two bid is a 195, that's 20 basis points higher than drawing everything, but in that case, in this case, again, you don't have to pay any of the interest unless you draw it. If all, if all that's drawn is that initial 50,000, let's say that the tax collections come in and you don't need anything further than this initial draw, then all you're going to owe in grand total outside of the cost of issuance is the 190, $190, excuse me, $190 of total interest cost. For every million dollars that you might need to draw, it's approximately, it's around here, $55 a day of interest cost. So if all of it was drawn, I think it's just a shade under $500 per day of interest cost. So our next steps, you have a resolution before you that we're asking for you to approve today, that allows the lawyers to put together the documents to close, and then we would close the loan on October 20. Madam Mayor, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions? I think the Mayor Protim had a question about the fee. Mayor Protim?
I thought I heard you say $25,000 a month, is that, was that a month?
The interest cost?
Uh-huh.
It's, if you were to draw all of it, it's five, it's just under $500 per day. If, at closing, you felt the need to bring it all down, and you had that outstanding from day one of our closing to basically the final maturity date, I estimate it's just a shade under $19,000 of total interest.
Okay.
So you can see why the banks, they don't earn a lot of money on this, is one of the reasons why we didn't get as many bids, and that's, of course, we don't have to draw any of it other than the 50,000, so they, other than their small fee, basically, they could be anywhere from $190 for the 50,000 that we draw, up to just under $19,000.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Doesn't look like there's any further questions at this time, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? There's a motion second, any discussion to the.
Which one are we doing, option one or option?
Option two is our recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, option two, so let's see, Mayor Protim, is that a motion to approve the resolution with the recommended option two? Okay, is that a second? Councillor Garrett? Okay, so it's option two then, is on the table. Any further discussion? Okay, all right, we will, a second here. Cue it for voting. And it does pass, thank you. All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
We have councillor Thomas.
Ms. Alexander, before you move away, do you, by chance, Ms. Alexander, do you by chance know, well, the Tax Commissioner's Office said we're starting to get money in, do you have any idea what kind of money we're getting in, or do they already send it to you guys, or where are we, what does it look like? I guess that's what I'm looking for.
That is correct, we are still receiving motor vehicle tax, property tax revenue, that is not the bulk of the revenue that we receive from property taxes. We have not, to my knowledge, received much real property taxes, just personal property and motor vehicle. So we've received a small amount of tax revenue from the motor vehicle side, because that is collected all year.
Is the normal process, as the Tax Commissioner's Office receives those payments, they send it to you within a day or so? I mean, is that the?
Well, I don't know the exact timeline, but they do typically advance us monies that they receive. They typically provide to us the tax collections on the 15th of the next month for the prior month, so say for, if we were collecting in October, we would receive those October collections by November 15. But in years past, what she's done is, throughout the month of October, as she's receiving collections, she'll send us a check, so.
And of course, this year, there's nothing typical, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have councillor Henderson.
And just a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about trying to come up with a number worth the digest ended up landing after it had been certified at the state. Have we gotten any closer to that?
We are still working on that, we still need to meet with the Tax Commissioner's Office, we requested another meeting this past week, and hopefully we'll get some.
Well, they've been understandably busy, I understand that.
Right.
Yeah, as soon as we could get that, I think just from a transparency perspective, I'd love for the public to see where we ended up, I would love to see where we ended up, because I think that's going to have an impact, not only on what we have to draw from that authorized tan, but how we're going to end up in terms of being able to meet our obligations.
Right.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir. And that concludes the discussion on that item.
All right, Mayor, next item is a resolution designating the month of October as Community Planning Month. Mayor Protim, you may read it into the record if you desire.
Resolution acknowledging the month of October to National Community Planning Month. Whereas community planning and plans can help manage development in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. Whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. Whereas the Columbus Council, Columbus Consolidated Government, and Planning Department endorse this National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our life. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the Planning Advisory Commission and other citizens, planners, who have contributed their time and expertise for the improvement of Columbus, Georgia. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, hereby designate the month of October 2017 as Community Planning Month in Columbus, Georgia, and I move this adoption.
All those in favor, please state aye. Great, Rick, you want to tell us a little bit about it, introduce our great staff?
Good morning again, and thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about October being National Planning Month, this is something that goes on throughout the country, and we certainly want to be a participant in that, as your planning department with this. Normally, and I want to tell you thank you for letting us come this morning, normally we would have done this last Tuesday night, but we were a little busy, we were out talking to neighborhoods and so forth about the future of this community, and we'll do that again tonight, and I'll share that with you just in just a second. The thing you should carry away from you this morning about dealing with the planning is you have a professional staff that deals with the planning issues of this community. The important thing about that is, we're looking out really for the overall future of the community, and how it should be developed, and how it will be developed over the next several years. We deal, not only with this zoning, for the longest time here, that was the only thing that this planning department was known about, was we deal with zoning. But we do deal with other land use issues and so forth, we also work with our Board of Historic and Architectural Review, we work with our Uptown facade board, we work as advocates really in terms of dealing with boards, zoning appeals, and we do work with other agencies and community groups throughout, throughout the community itself. So we're working and looking again, trying to make sure we know how this community's going to develop, and how it's going to develop well, and provide the overall quality of life we've all come to expect in this community. As I said, we're in the midst right now of updating the confidence of plan itself, we've been here and told you about that, we've had, we've already had our two initial meetings, we met last Tuesday night at Windbrook Baptist Church to talk with the folks in that area, Thursday night, we were out at Midland Middle School to talk with the folks in the Panhale area, tonight, we go, we go out to Baker Middle School, we'll talk to the folks in that generalized area itself about their needs and wants and desires, and Thursday, we're back over at Fort, and in the following week, we have two more meetings to go on with this. Our whole objective is to get an understanding about what folks want to expect and deserve, really, in this community for future needs and growth, we're trying to make sure we understand that, because the plan we established is what the plan we hope this council will adopt eventually, and put, actually put into action, actually help us implement that in terms of making the quality of life better. So, we, again, we encourage folks to come out, if you're in the Baker Middle School area, we encourage you to come out tonight, we start at 6 o'clock, lasts about two hours, it's more of a hands-on approach really, in terms of what we want to see you, see in your community and how you want to get there, so we encourage everybody to come out and make that happen. Behind this morning is your, is your planning department, the ones that really do all the heavy lifting more than anything else from that standpoint. Will Johnson is our planning manager back here, Dave Cooper is our GIS technician from that, Kelly Littlefield worked with our BHAR department, excuse me, committee itself, Millicent Burden here is our administrative assistant, John Renfro is one of our planners also, and then Felton Grant deals with our right-of-way issues from that standpoint, so those are all things we've got going on. We're not, we not only deal with land use, I should say, when I thought it was Felton maybe reminded me, but we also deal with the transportation needs of this community as well, and trying to maintain that overall quality. We're missing right now, Lynn Temple, she's on our transportation side, and we're also missing Kevin Harret, who is our zoning administrator. All these folks are the ones that really do all the work for you, and do all, make all, make things happen for us, and. all, make things happen for us, and we're proud to have them, and just want to let you know, remind you again, how important, really, our planning department plays in this government.
Thank you. Let's see, we have city manager.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I'd just like to really take the opportunity to thank Director Rick Jones and the Planning Department staff for their great work, especially considering what they're doing with the master plan at this particular town. They are reaching out to the entire community, and we hope the community will come out and help be a part of what our future is going to look like here in Columbus, Georgia. I'd really like to thank them, because as I think back when we last did the update, we hired outside consultants. We were anticipating base realignment and closure brack, and we were anticipating we were going to get twenty-five to thirty thousand additional people coming to Columbus, and so we hired an outside consultant, because we were wanting to see phenomenal growth like we had never seen before, and we paid the consultants six hundred thousand dollars to do the very work that they are doing internally within our staff right now. And so, considering that, we're not paying six hundred thousand dollars, I don't know that we pay the entire staff six hundred thousand dollars. They are, that's a tremendous savings to us, and they are going to provide a valuable product that is going to see us through twenty, thirty-eight, and beyond. So I wanted to take this opportunity to really thank them for the savings that we're realizing by not going to an outside consultant, and for what they're going to, the product that they are going to produce that's going to take care of Columbus in terms of our foreseeable future. So thank you for your great work.
Thank you. Let's see, we've got Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I was able to attend the meeting in Midland. I think Kelly and John were there, and it was probably, well, let me say, there were probably twenty-five, thirty, somewhere in that range. We divided into four groups, and we each had our own little discussion about what we were, wanted to do, looking at the map, you know, a variety of questions. Counselor Thomas was there. It was very interesting in how well organized and laid out it was. We all had our little clickers, and we could answer questions about the, the different aspects of the, of the community. And I, I just want to commend you for putting that together. I know Will Johnson was there too, but, you know, he's, he's always there, so. But anyway, it was well organized, well laid out. Staff did a great job, and I think, I think the community enjoyed that time there, so two hours well spent.
Thank you, Counsel Allen, for the kind words. Be honest, we, we're a little bit disappointed in the crowds, I won't say that, but we, we pretty much have gone now for quality over quantity, really, in terms of, because the meetings we've had so far, the two we've had, we've had some good results. The crowds have not been tremendous, but, again, the, the response we got, and the comments and suggestions have been great. We're hoping for more of that to come. We're also saying to you, though, that if you cannot make, make the meetings, we certainly have provided other avenues for you to get there, either go to our website, or the Comp Plan website. We have a Facebook, Facebook, I'll get that in a second, Facebook page, that you can also make comments on. We eventually, as we go, we, after we get through with all the meetings, we'll, we'll put all these comments out there for folks to look at, and they can kind of get an idea or feel for what we're trying to achieve here. But we really want folks to, to participate in that. There's actually a survey they can, they can participate in, and provide us some, some ideas and some directions. We really want this to be the, the citizens' plan here, when it's all said and done. As I've said to you before, this staff behind me, we probably could knock this thing out in a week, and be done with it, and we just go on. But that's not the intent of it. The real purpose of the, of the plan is to be, make sure we do have the input from our citizens. So, again, we, we want to strongly encourage folks to help us out with that, and get their, make sure their voice is heard in the future of Columbus.
Let's see, we have Counsel Huff.
Good morning, Director Jones.
Good morning.
And group. Thank you all for what you do. I will personally need to get with you after this evening. I have another meeting at the same time, at six, so I'm not going to make the one, because you know I make almost all, and try to stay updated. But I put out a couple of fillers, messages, text messages to a few people, to hopefully try to build the crowd for this evening.
Good.
I'll be in contact with you in a couple of days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that looks like it's it. Rick, you want to come around and get the proclamation for the group? You missed everybody.
We're everybody. Yeah, everybody.
Thank you. Somebody late, but I'll be there. Well, Eric Fisher, thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate you guys, thank you. Thanks.
We have one more item, Mayor. There's an add-on resolution that's been passed around the table. It's a settlement on the claims of Jemarius Oliver for twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval to approve the settlement of a lawsuit, Oliver versus Columbus Consolidated Government, okay, twenty thousand dollars. All those in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you, that's all we had listed, Mayor.
Okay, and well, now we have the public agenda. Hold on just a second. And we have Ms. Teresa Alamein, who would like to speak with us. She's representing the Southern Anti-Racist Network, and she would like to speak with us about crime prevention grant funding. Good morning.
It's the Southern Anti-Racism Network. We're not against the racists, we want to transform them. We are against racism as an institution in communities. And I'm before you today to call for an investigation into the crime prevention grant making. Certainly, you recall that on June thirteenth, I came before council, and I asked for you to give me adequate funding for a program. You watched the video, and I passed out some information about it, and I was very curious at how the city manager went around to all of you while I was talking. The mayor wasn't here, and I wondered what he was saying to you as I was making my presentation. Perhaps it had nothing to do with me, but nevertheless, you were silent on my comments. Have I been talking for three minutes already? Well, at any rate, the documents-
It's a countdown.
Huh?
You have three minutes and fifty seconds left on your first, it's a countdown.
Oh, that's the way it counts. Oh, okay, good. So, well, what I gave Lindsey, I'm so sorry, I didn't collate it in advance, but what you should be having before you is the top five grant recipients by year, thanks to the wonderful records of the Clerk of Council, of which I was glad to pay the service fee for. I know now every single organization that received crime prevention grant money for the years two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, those fiscal years. And thanks to one of my wonderful board members, we were able to take the data and look at who were the top five recipients for each of those years. Are we paying attention? Because the top five grant recipients by year, the Columbus Police Department topped the year in thirteen, and of course, they're in for the other years here, except for sixteen and seventeen. But it, it amounts to a few organizations, each receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars over that period, in order to prevent crime. And as we know now, what's happening in this community is not working. It's really not working. And there are a lot of great organizations who are contributing to various little small efforts. One program has their little fifteen people over here, another program has their little twenty over here, and so, you know, the big, the big grantees of the Literacy Council, Literacy Alliance of Columbus Tops List, with over four hundred thousand over this five-year period. And the one thing that you should know about the crime prevention grant making, that it overwhelmingly benefits the school district. The school district has a very well-oiled school-to-prison pipeline. The reason you have the gang activity that you have now in this community is because of that school-to-prison pipeline. I spoke before the school district last night in the school board, and one of the documents that you have are my comments before the school board last night. The other document is the press release I sent out this morning, calling for the investigation of the crime prevention grant making. And so, in fifteen months, that picture up there is going to change significantly, I think. We know for sure Madam Mayor will no longer be here in fifteen months. But it's really the mayor's project, just like the Columbus Consolidated Government budget is the mayor's. I see the crime prevention grant making, what I refer to as scheme, as, as a mayor's project. And I say it's the most unethical, incestuous patronage scheme I've ever seen in giving away public dollars. And I say that specifically because of Georgia Appleseed, which walked away with nearly four hundred thousand dollars of city money over several years. They just cut us off like that, and walked away on June thirtieth. The project manager quit, the person who was here on the ground quit, and I suppose it's going to start over, huh?
That's your, a five-minute warning.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Because when I helped Georgia Appleseed get into the Columbus community in two thousand eleven, at that time, Mr. Tripp Tomlinson was on their board. I was looking at his bio today, and he still lists himself as being on their board.
He's not, he's resigned.
I, I'd like to think he's not on the board at this point, because with him getting all this money from the city, I would have thought that he, as an attorney, would certainly recuse himself.
Several years ago, thank you.
Yes, because I think that he is a good person, and he and I sat on a committee over at Marshall Middle School, when they were suspending a third of those three hundred students every year. We were doing everything we could to help that principal over there, because when you suspend the students and you put them out on the street, you subject them to those other students who were suspended before that, who have now felonies of their own at the ages of twenty-something, so now you've got twelve-year-olds who are going down for serious crimes, thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of stolen goods, and it's all juveniles? That's a report I saw in the paper. You have a serious problem with the gangs, and the crime prevention money is not helping, and it should, and it's going to take a long time, excuse me, to undo what has been done. And I just want to read a few comments that I made before the school board. First off, because I thought Georgia Appleseed played a rather strange role with the school district, but I found out later that then. First off, I was mistaken when I thought that Georgia Appleseed was participating in the tribunals greasing the school-to-prison pipeline, sending hundreds of students every year into the prison program called AIM. I know now that Georgia Appleseed claims to have been instrumental in the acquisition of the multimillion-dollar grant that brought the positive behavior intervention and supports in Project Aware to Muskogee County School District. I'm sorry about that misunderstanding, because I did say that to quite a few people about Georgia Appleseed, and I do want to be accurate. What I do know now, and the reason I came to the school board last night, was to sound the alarm, and I'll just read this part. The out-of-school suspensions that put hundreds, if not thousands, of students a month on the mean streets of Columbus create the conditions for schools to be incubators for gang activity in Muskogee County and surrounding communities, where poverty and unemployment are high. Approximately twenty years ago, I was a mentor to a fifteen-year-old who was trying to leave a gang in Durham, North Carolina. She explained, "They beat you in, and they beat you out." In other words, they bully you into joining the gang. When you try to get out, they beat you, and sometimes, as we know now, they kill you if you're dealing a threat or obstacle to their criminal enterprise. What to look for?" And that's what I said to the school district, and you can read this later. But there are signs, all kinds of signs. When I lived in Durham fifteen years ago, we had this problem big time, and the police department and the gang task force educated the whole community about the manifestos, the creeds, the signs, the colors, and the symbols of all the gangs, because you've got homegrown gangs here. The Gates to Disciples, the Zohannans, and a lot of other names you don't even know about, they're in here big time, and I've seen this happen before. And in terms of the quality of life of the community, it is severely diminished by the loss of a whole generation of young people, and we're working on generations of young people that you have lost in this community. When I first came here, I couldn't understand why all these young black men were on the front of the newspaper. I actually went to that executive editor, Joe Kita, and accused him of just doing bad news reporting. But it's news because you've got the kind of organized crime by young people in this community that I haven't seen anywhere, ever. And I've lived a lot of places, but it's organized crime, and they're all young. They're all under thirty. And you know I'm telling the truth? You've got thirty-three murders. So I'm saying that crime prevention grant money should be used differently, should be used differently. You don't have enough police officers. You can't afford to give away seven hundred thousand dollars a year. You really can't. But if you're going to give it away, it has to be done in a way so that you don't just have somebody administrating the giveaway, you really got to have a strategic plan associated with it. So I'm calling for an investigation to how it's given out. That's what I'm calling for, and it's not being. I just wanted to be on notice that I'm calling for the investigation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Alamein, and we do take these issues very, very seriously, and we will certainly look into it. We, of course, have the board that makes the decision, as you said, but council does review, and we look into it and monitor it regularly, so we'll continue to do that and take a fresh look at those items that you brought up. So thank you very much. All right, let's see here, I think that's it for the public agenda, and we've got the city manager's agenda at this time. Wait, we've got Counsel Wilson, did you want to say something?
Just to make sure that the audience don't feel that we're not listening or paying attention, is it possible to have the Crime Prevention President to come forward and-
Yes, actually, I've been calling him, I appreciate that, but he must not be here. Where is? Oh, good, Seth, I've been sending you texts, I figured you were-
I'm just in the back.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, we need Seth to, I figured he wasn't here, so I was going to do a referral, so good, I'm glad you're here. Seth, can you kind of-
Thank you.
-speak to some of this?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Seth.
What I would say is, she's correct that a large amount of the funds, about seventy percent, goes toward Muskogee County schoolchildren. Not of the school, but it's directly impacted by those kids. And that's because our, that's our most at-risk population. We found probably four years ago that the funds would be better used towards juveniles in elementary to middle school, and that's where we could see the most impact. So that's where those funds went. The, the programming that, you know, she, she had listed, let me get the paperwork out, some of the programs that got the most funds, and like, one of them was Boys and Girls Club, that's the DPI system. They take fifty kids that are on the bubble of literally being removed from the school system, through expulsion, suspension, because of grades, activities, whatever, and they are referred by the court system, and they are directly impacted by that. They remain in the school system, they remain to go to classes, they have to meet with counselors, they have to check in with the court systems. And those fifty kids would be fifty kids- And those fifty kids would be fifty kids that would be on the street otherwise. The Columbus Police Department, that is one of the larger grants. Now, some of these police in, I wanna say it was 2015, got two grants. And one was the Leeds Online Program and the Dare to be Great Program. The Leeds Online was a system that was brought into Columbus to track stolen property. We didn't have that system in Columbus, and we provided a one-year grant to install that system so that stolen property could be tracked. We had a fencing issue, because what people would do is they would take stolen property, pawn it, and it couldn't be tracked anywhere else. And so it led to a lot of stolen property being recovered. But the Dare to be Great Program combines the Dare Program and the Great Program, which is a gang resistance awareness program, into one summer program that's conducted... It was at double churches. Now it's at Fort Middle School. And they work with three hundred to four hundred kids in the summertime, all the way through the month of June. And they work with teachers. The Muskogee County School System works with the police department to specifically pick teachers and law enforcement to run this program. And they teach about gangs, as well as they have some stuff with math and reading. They have a craft time. They have recreation. So it's kinda like a month-long summer camp. And there's several others. You know, Literacy Alliance, obviously, there's a direct correlation between literacy rates and crime rates. And so, we have pared it down to where we only work with the kindergarten readiness and the adult program. The kindergarten readiness was utilized because we felt like that's where the biggest impact could be. There's very few grants that get fully funded, just based on the fact that we know that if we funded some completely, like the Literacy Alliance, their application is usually over a hundred thousand dollars every year. And this year, it was, I think, brought down to sixty, fifty thousand. And reason being is, as we've told this council, and I think some council people have told us, we can't continue to fund the same ten grants every year and expect to move forward. So the board weighs those programs. I take exception to, this is the mayor's program, considering three of the board members are picked by council and then approved by council. And then four of those board members are picked by the mayor and then approved by council. They're from very diverse backgrounds. They're from different areas of the city. They're from different vocations. We have four African-American, three white board members. So it's a very diverse program. They spend probably two and a half months reviewing the applications, meeting every other week. The deadline's March 31st. And through that process, they meet every other week, reading, discussing, making notes, and then voting on the grants themselves. Every grant is reviewed. The only time a grant is not seen by the board is if there's things missing. Their 501(c)(3) status, their boards, or whatever that is. And then they, I go back to them and go, "Here's what I'm missing. I need you to resubmit or give me the information." So we've never had an application that was not reviewed by the board. So that's kinda the process. And then, obviously, I come to y'all with whatever... This year, I think it was twenty-nine, I think, applications that we brought to the council for approval.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
And Mr. Brown, I do want to clarify, too, that of the four that are appointed by the mayor, the ordinance requires that one of those be a law enforcement person, one of those be a school district person, one of those be a Fort Benning representative. And I don't recall if the fourth one is designated or not.
It's not.
But those are, those are in the ordinance, that that's where those will come from.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, since we're on the public agenda, is there...
No, no, once the ten minutes has expired, then that's it. And then he just says some information. But you can come back on public agenda if you'd like and continue the conversation. Or you can certainly send us emails, and we can answer questions.
Well, I'll be at the meeting tonight.
Okay.
So I have an opportunity to say more.
Okay, great, great. Seth, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and Alva, I know you're here. I just got a text from the police department. They just wanted to correct, it's been twenty-seven horrific murders this year, not thirty-three. So every time that's put in the newspaper, we get besieged with emails that it's right, it's wrong, it's whatever. And I know you're here and tried to do a very good job in that regards. They wanted me to pass that along. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And Counsel Woodson, thank you for knowing that Seth was here. I thought maybe he had stepped out. All right, let's see. We have the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got what is believed to be a short agenda today.
Yeah, uh-huh.
I've got a driveway variance, and we're requesting approval to deny...
We've got a motion and second to deny. Is there any discussion related to this item? Okay, seeing none. The item is queued for voting. Yeah, you have to vote yes to deny it. Yeah, okay, and it's good. It passes. Yes, yes.
Wanted to be heard.
Oh, I'm so sorry, ma'am. I didn't know there was anybody here that wanted to be heard. Let's, we're gonna redo that.
So with that said, Madam Mayor, let me just tell you what this is about.
Oh, okay, okay.
If someone's gonna be heard.
Okay, sure.
This is a request to deny a variance to allow driveway access to Forest Road from 615 Caribou Drive. The property owner has existing driveway access to Caribou Drive within the Huntwood subdivision. There are thirty other properties around Forest Road, north side of Forest Road between Woodrow Farm and Chicago Road that could come forward with a similar request. And so allowing one would set a precedent for others to come forward requesting the same thing. And you know, this is a seven-million-dollar project. And the UDO states that residential lots in any major or minor subdivision should have no direct access to a collector or arterial street unless approved by council, state, and so forth. And Forest Road is classified as a major collector. And so because it has access through Huntwood subdivision, we are requesting that you deny direct access to Forest Road, because you will likely be followed with similar requests if we allow such. And so our request today is that you would deny it.
And yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Please come forward and just state your name. And if you would, tell us a little bit about your concerns and issues.
Thank you. Good morning, counsel. My name is Sarah Beecham Powell. The property at 615 was purchased in ninety-three. And I have my plat with me. I'm sorry, I didn't bring copies for everyone. But I did wanna approach and give... I know that y'all, I'm glad, thank you for not shooting me when I came up there. On the plat itself, it's, my property is in Lot Six on that plat. And at the ends of my property, the back end of my property, is correct, is on Forest Road. And if you, can you pull it up just a little? You have to put it down just a little. Yeah, yes, thank you, thank you. This is, this is a fence. This is my fence. And if you see my property, all of this, in this area, prior to the development area... Oh, thank you. Prior to the development that was occurring behind my property, all of that was mine. That land is lying in Lot Twenty-three and Lot Twenty-four here. All of this, that's all the way up to Forest Road, that's my property. And so when the development came through, of course, I lost all of the land that was in Lot Twenty-four. But the property that's in Lot... I think I'm reading it right. I'm sorry, I lost all the land that was in Lot Twenty-three. But the land that's in Lot Twenty-four, that's still my property. And if you notice, there is a fence there. It's been there the entire time. I do have a photo of it this morning on my phone. And what I'm just simply asking, and I didn't realize that there were other properties on Woodrow Farm and Chicago, but I'm looking at Forest Road specifically. Don't know if it's gonna set a precedence for Forest Road. I doubt it, because like I've said, with the engineering department, there are not a lot of properties on that particular line that have the ability to even add the driveway. They don't even have the property. And with my property being there, all the way out to Forest Road prior to the development, what I simply wanted to do, and I requested a driveway there on that property, just to be able to come in. You've got a hundred driveways there already, and I figured one more wouldn't hurt. So what I'm just simply asking is for a permit to add a driveway there, simply because it's not a, it's not, it's not gonna obstruct traffic. It's not gonna be a disadvantage to anyone. It's lined up with every other driveway that's in that area. And even with me adding a driveway there, it's far enough, I have enough property back there. It's far enough off of the drive, the walkway there that they're adding. So it meets all of the criteria. So I just simply wanted to request that. I went in initially on the 30th of August to request, before they started to pour the cement, and I saw them coming down, digging up the dirt. And I asked Mr. Riley at that point two questions. I said, "Well, I wanted to do, I wanted to put a driveway there. Didn't know anything about a permit. Didn't even, was not provided that information at that time." And so I decided, "Well, you know, let me just look it up myself." And when I call and talk, I think her name is Terry down there, I can't remember her name. But she gave me the USD. She mentioned something about USD. I said, "I don't even know what that is." So I researched it and found out that you simply just request a driveway encroachment permit, which is what I did in writing on the 5th of September. And when I put that down, I did a little research to see that I did have what they call a rear frontage for that area. And so, and I asked Mr. Riley at my first visit with him in person, "Well, let me just ask you this. What's the point of having a driveway encroachment permit if it's never granted?" That was the first question that I didn't get answered. And the second question was, "Under what circumstances in the past have you granted one?" Has nobody in Columbus gotten a driveway permit, encroachment, when they've already had a driveway in one area? So I didn't get that information either. So what I'm bringing to council this morning is just to, just wanna know, based upon the ones that have been granted, why can't mine be granted if it's not gonna be granted? And now, and I'm assuming they already decided they weren't gonna do it prior to bringing it to council, because they've already poured the cement down there. And I got pictures of that this morning.
Okay, we've got Counselor Thomas with a question.
Ms. Newman, do you have there the map that we have on the report that shows that area?
They are, they're working to put it on the screen.
As I understand it, the property that we're talking about is Lot Thirty that is in the, outlined in red, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And the request is, point to where she wants the driveway.
She wants to access Forest Road in this area.
Okay. The lots that are on Forest Road, that would be Thirty-one, Thirty-two, Thirty-three, Thirty-four, Thirty-five, do those have driveways on to Forest Road?
No, ma'am, they all access from Caribou Drive. Only those lots, such as these, that only have frontage on Forest Road, would have driveway access to Forest Road.
Okay, so none of, none of those, and then Lot Thirty-six and on, is that the same? Across, I can't read what that street is.
Yes, ma'am.
Also on Caribou, all along Forest Road?
Yes, ma'am. There, I went through and counted just the north side in that area, and there was over thirty lots that had similar situations, that had double frontage.
Say that again.
There was over thirty lots on just the north side between Woodrow Farm and Chicago Road that had double frontage lots. In other words, they had their rear property fronted on a public street as well as the front portion of their property. So we've already received one similar request and denied it as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything further?
Yes, ma'am. I was gonna say that now, I see that lot, that plat, that map. The question I have would be, how many, even though those people are up there, and you say they have rear frontage, but do they have the property to extend to Forest Road like I do? Because my thing was that, my property is just not rear frontage. My property is all the way out to Forest Road, which is where it has been used for the development. That's my property. So I'm not asking, they may have to ask you for a foot or two, you know, they might not even be able to extend because they don't own it. And that was what I was saying to you initially, that that's my property. I'm not having to ask, can I extend beyond? I'm asking, can I just have a right of way, because that is my property?
Yes, ma'am, we understand what you're requesting. They own as well, all the way up to the right of way on Forest Road, as do those other lots that I was referring to earlier.
Anything, any other information, any other questions?
So, so just to be clear...
Counselor Woodson, did we ever deny someone else? I think it was their question.
Well, I don't...
We deny people routinely when they request frontage on a major collector or a collector or an arterial road. And that's throughout Columbus. We have numerous lots that have double frontage that way.
And I think your point is, any of those properties where the back of the property is, comes up to Forest Road except for City Right of Way, could come back once we grant this one and say, "Well, you granted that one, so now I want Hunt to be able to access Forest Road rather than exit the subdivision on Caribou."
That is correct.
And, and so if you do one, you gotta start doing the others. There's a domino, that could be a domino effect, is the point.
That's correct.
And let me ask, what, what actually would be the harm in that if they did? I mean, I don't know if anybody would wanna pay for it, if they wanna go through it, but what would be the harm if they did? I mean, if it's not gonna provide, if it's not gonna impede safety, and it's just a right of way, what would be if I did it? I mean, I've been living there for twenty-three years. I've never known anybody. And I've been using it, not knowing, according to Mr. Riley, that it was illegal, because it was, I told him, "That's my property. I'm driving on it. What do you mean it's illegal?" He said, "When you access the street." So what would be the harm if I did? And my neighbor decided they wanted one, which I, I don't know what their... But I, I haven't seen anybody use it like I do in the last twenty-three years I've been there. Even before they put the new, and that other side is some brand-new Huntwood, Caribou on that other side. That's all new. If you look at their property, it's not even feasible.
There are safety concerns. There's two concerns that we would have. One is safety, where a driver's not necessarily expecting for someone to come out of the rear of their property. Two is the proximity to the intersections. As I noted in my agenda report, we're spending over seven million dollars to improve travel along this road to make it safer and to move the volume of traffic through the area. Every time you introduce a driveway, it's the same thing as introducing an intersection. It may not be the same number of cars, but there's a requirement for cars to stop, cars to look and make sure there's not another car entering onto the roadway. And so our concern is, if you look at her driveway in and of itself, while it may not be as big of a concern, it's the number that could come after that, the number of requests we would receive. And then if you added, you can imagine, if you added even half, you added another fifteen or twenty driveways to Forest Road, then we've defeated the purpose of the widening project that we're doing there now.
Okay. All right, I think that concludes discussion at this point. Did you have anything else, Mayor Broton? Yes, she did. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Since she's my sorority sister, I better talk to her.
Okay, all right, you go ahead.
I was gonna say, we have denied them in the past, and not necessarily on Forest Road. But I did some on North Star Drive, from a safety perspective, because they wanted, they built a new subdivision right before you get to Dawson Estates. They wanted to be able to have driveways come on North Star Drive. And from a safety perspective, I felt it was better not to happen. And it does make a difference. It seems like it doesn't, believe me. And it does make a difference, it seems like it doesn't, believe me, it does make a difference.
You're gonna pull the love card? That's how I felt that with love, so I'm gonna pull the love card.
That's the way it was meant, absolutely. What we'll do is, since we already voted, uh, we would have to have a motion to reconsider, and it was unanimous, so any of the councilors here can move to reconsider, so I'll call for a motion, if it fails, then the vote stands. Is there anyone who would like to move to reconsider, um, the vote just cast previously, based on information heard? Okay, it does not look so, at this time, ma'am, I'm sorry, I know that's not the result you wanted, but we appreciate you being here.
Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. City Manager.
On the purchases, uh, Madam Mayor, A and B, uh, we, um, asking for repair of Caterpillar Off-Road Dump Truck and a haul, um, truck, um, engine problems, uh, one is, the first one is $46,852.10 with Yancey Brothers Company, and the second vehicle is with Yancey Brothers, it's $46,378.89. These are very expensive vehicles, um, the first one is a $365,000 vehicle to replace.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for approval, and I was just apprised that the server went down, so our electronic voting is gonna have to reboot it and probably will not be back up before we're done with this. So, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please state aye.
And that was A and B, uh--
I'm sorry, A and B, so it was the repair of the 2001 and 2007.
C, uh, temporary staffing for the Civic Center, uh, this is something that we've done in the past and we want to continue to do.
We've got, um, a motion and second for approval, any discussion on temporary staffing at the Civic Center? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
I've got, um, computer hardware and licensing for SIP implementation, it's $33,263.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to approve items D through J, is there any item that you, that anyone would like to pull for specific discussion? If not, I'll just read them all. Okay, uh, D is computer hardware and licensing for, uh, the SIP implementation, E is, uh, large industrial fans for the Recycling and Sustainability Center, F is equipment support for the IPTV project, G is, uh, to amend annual contract for Internet services to include cable television services, H is for Ford F-50, four-by-four truck, it's, uh, being, what did I say? 150. Um, okay, uh, being purchased pursuant to statewide contract, I is a Ford Expedition, also being purchased pursuant to a state, uh, the Georgia statewide contract, and J is for postage reimbursement. All right, uh, seeing no discussion, um, all those in favor, please state aye. All right, are there any, uh, opposed? Okay.
And Madam Mayor, I've got a Williams Road, Fortune Road Traffic Improvement, uh, update, and, uh, while, um, she is there, there's, um, and, um, an email in the information section related, um, to, um, Williams, I identify at Williams Road, uh, that I just want to call to their attention, and if you'll just mention all of that.
Okay.
Okay, we have, uh, several initiatives going on on Williams Road right now, what I put in your package is a request from Georgia DOT, they have a project to go out, and basically, it's just restriping what's there and have more definition on the turning movements and try to get some separation in the travel lanes, so that it should make it flow a little smoother. Um, I will note that there have been some discussions in the past about the possibility of adding a signal here, um, long-term, I think we're looking at maybe having a roundabout there, or there are discussions on that as well, but this would be an interim measure, um, for now. The next thing is, if you recall, back in 2012, we went through the process of having a traffic study, and then we also had a series of public meetings where we were looking at making improvements to Williams Road at some point in the future, and we never really got consensus on what the landowners and the, and the public in that area really wanted. So, um, a few months ago, we met with, um, the consultant and asked them to go back and refresh the traffic study, there's been some change in dynamics out there, if you will, some of the property has changed hands, there's already been some constructions taking place and some that's proposed, and so we wanna make sure that as we start planning in the future and allocating funds, that we have a plan ready to go on that section. So we are asking them to, to refresh it, um, and they're in process of that as we speak, so we'll be coming back as soon as we get that information, and we'll go through the same process, we'll have public meetings, um, we'll let council know, and then we'll take the information that we glean from that and identify funding and a project. Also, many of you may receive calls on the Fortson-Williams Road intersection, and at that intersection, um, we're proposing a roundabout, and that is under design for a roundabout.
Okay, uh, we have Counselor Thomas.
Donna, you know that I need you to point out what you're doing here, tell me again what that, um, what you're gonna--
Okay. Um, it's pretty much like it is out there today, they're just adding striping, you'll see the green, that's striping that they're adding to it, if you will, to separate the through lanes from the left turn lanes, um, to better define that space. What happens sometime is you get people turning left, and then other people turning left, and there's some confusion as to who has the right of way, and it just kinda slows things down and jams it up.
Excuse me, this is, um, excuse me, Williams Road from left to right, and I-185 from top to bottom, is that--
Yes, ma'am, those are the ramps coming off I-185.
Going north.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you draw something?
This is, well, hold on, there we go. Where's my toe?
We need a training class.
We do. Good night? I tried that one, okay, I'm sorry. Let's try this again.
There, you see, got a personal car.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. So this is the left, I mean, this is the northbound ramp, right here, so this would be for right turn movements, this would be for left turn movements on to Williams Road, going back--
And those lanes are there now, right?
Yes, ma'am, they're there, it's more or less just a restriping project, if you will. Um, there, there are some minor extensions of, um, you'll see a little section right in this area of where they're extending the nose to that island a little bit, but it's just more defining, there's already a left turn movement in this area, but the striping's faded, and so they want to make sure that it's clear, so that traffic can better understand where they need to be for their movements.
Thank, thank you.
All right, uh, we have Counselor Henderson.
Well, I'm just gonna add a little bit of personal testimony, uh, what happens is with, with the vehicles that are traveling, um, east, and they try to turn, and there's somebody trying to go back to the west coming off of the south ramp, a lot of folks don't pull out there to that break, because they're not sure what the vehicles are doing coming down, uh, from, from Williams Road, so it bottlenecks, uh, 'cause, 'cause it goes to a two-lane just past the access to the north ramp on 185, but it really does, and it's just, it's, it's traffic, it's peak traffic time driven, I mean, it's really only a problem at, uh, late in the afternoons, but it, it really can back traffic up all the way onto that, onto that south ramp. So, I'm anxious to see how this works, I hope it encourages folks to pull on up there and wait their turn and queue to, to turn to the left, um, with the new striping, 'cause it looks like there's enough room there for a vehicle to get out of the lane of oncoming traffic and, and be ready to turn left as soon as there's a break in traffic coming from the east.
That's correct, if you'll notice, it does try to get people to come into the inside lane and then merge over into the outside lane, versus trying to make that movement all at one time.
Yeah, and, and hopefully, the, the new striping will keep the traffic to the north side of those two lanes.
That's correct.
I appreciate you trying, anything's gotta help.
Okay, well, we'll continue to monitor it after, um, this project is complete and see if it flows better, and if it continues to have problems, we'll look at other things.
Based on peak traffic time, it's, I think it already warrants some either signalization or some other type of traffic, uh, movement, um, plan, I think that the challenge is gonna be, as the development occurs more and more out Williams Road, uh, it's just gonna, it's just gonna ratchet up, and there's two, there's two undeveloped commercial pieces of property right up there at the corner of Williams and Veterans, uh, Whitesville, I'm sorry, uh, Williams and Whitesville, that, uh, when they are developed, uh, that's, that's really gonna bookend that interchange, it's gonna make it even tougher.
Well, we're gonna look, when we're looking at the corridor, we're looking from Veterans all the way to Whitesville, so this area will be in that study.
And you know, I'm, I'm kinda into camp, these folks that are always saying, "Oh my gosh, another roundabout," but I, you know, I gotta get the devil his due, uh, everyone I've traveled on, I know the one out there off Blackman, and, and, I, they work, and I think maybe the way, I think maybe the reason they do work is 'cause they are a little uncomfortable, I mean, you, you slow down, I mean, even the one out here, it, it forces you to kinda take your time, and, and it keeps traffic moving, so I'm, I'm, I'm not a full convert yet, but I'm, I'm slowly acclimating, I think, to the, to the benefits of it. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we have, uh, Counselor Baker.
Well, different issue, are you finished with that?
Yes.
I just, real, real brief, 'cause I think I had sent the council's a note on that DOT study on 185 speed limit, I didn't see it on here, will that come later?
Well, I had it in the, um, for a future date, actually, I think it's for next, the following meeting.
Uh, that's fine, I, I just wanna make sure I hadn't missed something, and I did notice they had mentioned 65 in, in that speed limit, but if you ride out there, parts of that are posted 70, so--
Yeah.
I don't know when DOT made that decision, but that's, that strip through, uh, through my district airport to Macon, it just, just needs some help, it's, and I know they'll have to look at the whole thing, but, uh, that doesn't change anything, it just supports their DOT review.
It's just requesting they do a study--
Right.
--to determine what's the appropriate speed.
Gotcha, thank you, ma'am.
All right, I think that concludes discussion on this point. Oh, okay, hold on just a second, we've got, uh, Counselor Huff with discussion.
Uh, there was an email that we received in Avery Woods, uh, on the four-way stop, and I think it's Counselor Baker's district, but I went by and rode the neighborhood and I talked to one of the neighbors and everything, and I don't know if you've seen it, they had a, uh, counter, but the count, it's, it's, it doesn't really matter how many cars come through, they, they are really speeding, and, uh, it makes sense if you go, the, the road is, I have the other side of Preston, and Counselor Baker has one side, but, it's just a long stretch of road, so you have people walking, and they have their dogs and everything, and they're having to jump in and out of the street, I watched one mother with her, uh, son on his little training bike, and she's constantly, you know, looking. But if you go and ride it and see what they're saying, it's, it's, it's a, it's a stretch of road, that if they can put two-stop signs, they say if the city has an issue with, uh, cost, they're willing to pitch in and--
Well--
--get signs.
I, I will say, 'cause we get numerous requests for four-way stops, and there is a warrant process, just like there is for a traffic signal, and typically, a four-way stop is an interim measure before you install a traffic signal, so it almost has to meet the same warrants, which that area likely will not, and then the concern is, um, if it's a speeding issue and you put a stop sign where the public is not expecting it, then they're typically gonna run it, they're not gonna stop anyway, and I know that becomes an enforcement issue, but we are aware of it, and we're looking at possibly some other type measures that can be done to discourage that type of activity in that area. I know we keep going back to the traffic calming, but speed tables are not necessarily the issue, we've had several installed, we've had to remove some because of the way, um, the installation mechanism's just not working, um, so we're having to look at alternatives to that, which we're doing, but we also need to consider, I think, longer term than just a traffic table. So, and there are other things that you can do to slow traffic down or discourage through traffic, and so those are some of the things that we are considering, but we do still have it on our radar.
If you would, I spoke to one of the neighbors after I rode through last week, so if you would, reach out to them--
Okay, we can do that.
--the email, I think they had you copied on the email, I think, if not--
We do have an email.
I forwarded to you, and you get back with them and let them know.
We'll, we'll give them an update.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Madam Mayor--
Yes.
Just a reminder about the legislative, uh, Hometown Connection, um, is, um, October 30th at the Trade Center, and want to remind council members, in the information section of, um, your electronic council agenda packets, you'll find the proposed legislative agenda for 2018, and you'll find the last year's, uh, 2017 legislative agenda, we have eight items on the proposed 2018 agenda, and, uh, Counselor Thomas, we have a note there, just wanna remind you, uh, that you requested discussion on authority of council dealing with the Tax Assessor's Office, so, um, if there's something that you want added to this agenda, um, please let us know, and we are going to bring the legislative agenda at the next council meeting, which I believe is on the 24th, and then we're gonna ask you to vote on each individual items, and right now, we have eight. And, uh, so we just wanted to remind you of that, and then to just remind you that we hope that we will see you at the Hometown Connection on October 30th at the Trade Center.
Okay, uh, we have Counselor Thomas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager, I, I do want to, um, encourage my fellow councilors to remember that, um, when all of the, um, questions started arising about the Tax Assessor's Office and, um, uh, the authorities and what council could do and could not do, there were several of those that we were told that because of state law, we couldn't do anything. And so my, uh, request is that we talk about some of those issues that we found and see if we think there's something that we might be able to talk with our delegation about dealing with the, um, with legislation. I don't have any legislation to propose, but I would think, you know, like, perhaps Ms. Alexander might have something from the Finance Department that we need to look at, perhaps, you know, you as the city manager or the mayor may have something that we need to look at as we look at this whole, um, picture of what we, we are going through with our Tax Assessor's Office. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, that's all I have today.
Okay, great, we'll turn it over to, uh, the clerk then, Ms. Washington.
Madam Mayor and members of council, on the clerk's agenda, I have a couple of temporary street closing applications for your information on October the 12th, the Midtown Mingle on October the 28th, the Neighborhood Trunk-a-Treat Halloween Party on the 28th, also the Lexington Hill Community Family Trick-or-Treat, and also October the 31st, uh, the Community Trunk-a-Treat Festival, uh, then there's another one, November the 10th, for the, uh, block party. Have three resolutions, we submitted request to the Board of Honor to consider, uh, honorary designation in front of Scogner's Funeral Home in honor of Mr. John Scogner's, as well as a request to designate the Follow Me Bridge, Follow Me Trail Bridge in honor of Mr. Owen Ditchfield, those requests will approve, if it's, uh, council's desire, they can approve these.
Got a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor, please state aye.
And also, there was a third request, uh, to name Midtown, uh, honorary name Midtown Drive in honor of the Rainey McCullough School, they recommended that Midtown Drive be changed to the Rainey McCullough's Drive, and if it is the desire, then that request would have to be forwarded to, uh, Engineering Department, I believe it will take an ordinance to, uh, change that street name.
No, that can't be.
Let's see, hold on, we got Counselor Thomas.
Well, what we had, what I had asked, Citizens Way has an honorary designation as Carson McCullers, and what I had asked is that Midtown Drive have the honorary designation as Mal Rainey, so that we would have at the roundabout out here, the Mal Rainey, Carson McCullers honorary designations. The request was not to change the name of the street, but only to put the honorary designation there.
And that, we understood that, Counselor Thomas, and that was the request that we submitted to the Board of Honor.
But they came back telling us...
Right, and they came back with the recommendation to change the name of Midtown Drive, take down the honorary designation of McCullers, and then change the name of Midtown Drive to Rainey McCullers Drive.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we want Midtown Drive to stay the permanent street for mail and all of that.
Midtown is the one that goes this way.
Yeah, they're just trying to do the honorary designation.
From Barkswood to Rigdon.
With the school being added, honorary designation, the two streets coming together to represent the two names on the school.
That's what we're hoping for.
No, they were trying to do a permanent change, it sounds like, to the street, that's not what the request was, it was just honorary designation of two streets intersecting.
We can deny the official name, send it back to the board, so it's an honor. Yeah, send it back.
I would like to request that the Board of Honor revisit this, and perhaps if one of us need to be at that meeting, if you'll let us know, one of us will be there.
Or maybe we can just, I hate for them to say we're trying to influence, but since we do vote, and they're supposed to be independent, I wouldn't say they would, but just to be on the safe side, maybe you can give them the notes of council, or recommend this clip, or we can provide the clip to them to watch.
I will provide it.
And I don't think, I mean, I guess I'll let the city attorney weigh in, Counselor Thomas is over there, you know, to confer to see if it would matter if council attended the meetings and expressed their wishes.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, it's just that council approves what they do, that was my only concern. Let's see here, we've got Counselor Mayor Proton.
I'll leave it alone.
Are you, okay, okay, let's see, we've got Counselor Baker.
Well, that's okay too, 'cause I think Midtown runs across two and runs straight back and loops back into Macon, so you've got businesses on further down that have to come into consideration too, so that's a big...
Well, we'll send it back to the Board of Honor and ask them to take a look at it.
Let's see, do, okay, Counselor Henderson, you're off, okay, Counselor Huff?
Yeah, I just wanna address Counselor Baker's, that's what we was talking about, there are other businesses on that stretch, so we're not looking for a permanent mail, permanent address change to affect the mail, it's just the two names on the school would intersect right here, as McCullers and Rainey, from a honorary standpoint. Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, I think that concludes that discussion, so...
Then we have a letter resignation from Mr. Frank Etheridge resigning from the Planning Advisory Commission, needs to be received.
We got a motion, is there a second, a motion and second that the request be received with regrets, all those in favor, please state aye.
Then we have a request from Mr. Dan Holly, he's requesting a public hearing be called on his petition to rezon property at eighty-five forty-one Veterans Parkway, that was recommended. Thank you. And we have minutes of our Board of Honor, Board of Tax Assessors, Convention and Visitors, Board of Commissioners, and Hospital Authority.
We've got a motion and a second, that the minutes be received, all those in favor, please state aye.
On our board appointments, on the Animal Control Advisory Board, we're still waiting to hear back from a veterinarian association for Dr. McDermott's seat, we'll make another call back to them. Building Authority, we still need someone for Mr. Kel Jackson's seat, who has resigned. On our Civic Center Advisory Board, Counselor Woodson is nominating Ms. Nadine Harrelson.
Got a motion and second for confirmation, all those in favor, please state aye.
And on our Columbus Aquatics Commission, Counselor Allen is nominating Ms. Barbara Cummings for Ms. Kara Aubrey.
Got a motion and second for approval, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
And then on our Community Development Advisory Council, Counselor, wait a minute, I'm sorry, having sight issues this morning, Counselor Garrett is nominating Mr. Dell Caldwell for Mr. Jonathan Davis' seat.
We've got a motion and second for approval, all those in favor, please state aye.
And then on our Comprehensive Planning Stakeholders Committee, we've outlined these, and I, the Counselor Woodson is nominating Mr. Smallman.
Yes, we've got a motion, is there a second to confirm, Mr. Smallman, a second? All those in favor, please state aye.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, second, I think Hilton is, that's Miss Phil, just no A there, but all those in favor, please state aye.
Counselor Allen has something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Allen.
Yes, I want to nominate for District Six, John House.
John House, okay.
Can he be confirmed?
Yes.
Move confirmation.
Okay, we've got a motion from Counselor Allen, a second from Counselor Woodson, Mr. House be confirmed, all those in favor, please state aye.
All right.
And then on our Housing Authority, Mr., I'm sorry, that should be a Hospital Authority, not Housing Authority, Mr. James Webster, Mr. Jason Connolly, and Ms. Sarah Lang, they are all eligible to serve again, we have not made contact with them, we'll check and see if they're eligible, and we'll bring it back at our next meeting. Then our Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we still need someone for our District Two seat, Counselor Woodson is nominating Ms. Susan Gallagher.
Okay, we've got a motion and second for confirmation, all those in favor, please state aye.
And then on our Public Safety Advisory, Counselor Garrett is nominating Mr. Adrian Chester, and Counselor Wood's, I'm sorry, Counselor, Counselor Thomas, are you nominating Mr. Tyson?
Henderson.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, we've got, we've got a motion, is there a second to approve Mr. Chester, Mr. Bigley? All those in favor, please state aye.
And on our Recreation Advisory Board, we still need someone for Mr. Gary Bruce's seat, and our Youth Advisory, Alexis Hammons is being nominated by Counselor Baker.
We've got a motion and second for confirmation, all those in favor, please state aye.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, we've got Counselor Huff.
Mr. City Manager, I need some help on Tillman, right off of Brown Avenue, we're having an issue over there, I'll make a phone call back to help you out. But on Tillman, off of Brown Avenue, we're having some issues with grass and different items being put out on the street, and on Pecan Street, there seems to be someone bringing items into the neighborhood after an eviction somewhere else to avoid, avoid taking it to the landfill and paying the fees, so we are starting to see mattresses and furniture appear up and down the street, and we're trying to find out where it is, 'cause they're strategically moving it around to make sure it's in front of someone's house that has a water bill and trash pickup and all that. Yeah, so if you check on that form, I appreciate you.
They put a lot of effort, you think, you know, with all the effort they put into that, but it happened in our neighborhood recently, they drove around and they found something, but anyway, yeah. All right, I think that's it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, is there a second? All those in favor, please state aye. All right, great, we're adjourned, thank you all very much.